Good afternoon. We are pleased to be with you today. This is the fifth session of our book study and the topic today is mindful instruction and executive function. And with me today is Dr. Martha Staley and Dr. Michelle Rivers Murphy. So we're going to start by thinking about John Kabat-Zinn, who I consider to be almost the father of mindfulness as we look at mindfulness in schools. And you know, what he says is mindfulness is being present in the moment with purpose and without judgment. That's pretty good, you know? Think about your day and everything you have to do and all the hurrying and scurrying about and just pause and be consciously aware of what's happening around you. That can allow you to take in and appreciate the really good things that happen. Of course, it can also set things up so that you feel some of the things that aren't so good. So Michelle, I'm thinking about classrooms and mindful instruction. And what do you know in terms of the context of a teacher and a teacher's day? And what a teacher who is mindful could do that might make a difference?
First of all, anytime you see a teacher out anywhere, you should be doing this to them because teachers in classrooms today have to wear so many hats. And what they have to accomplish, I said, you know, they're really dealing with crises minute by minute, moment by moment. So unless we turn to something that makes sense to help us stay in the moment, to know that we can travel, you know, moment by moment through the school day, then we will not get ahead of the game called stress and trauma and vicarious trauma. So in the context of school, teachers really do need to be mindful and to demonstrate mindfulness as they teach their students and practice along next to them. Being fully present so that they can listen and they can be be in tuned with how their students are feeling, how they're feeling when a student disrupts something out of nowhere. And there's that moment of, you know, quick reaction or with mindfulness, there's that moment of stimuli, space, take a deep breath and respond in the spirit that you know that you can and you should. And that's what mindfulness does. It helps you to help the students by paying attention to them. Really dive, not dive into the lesson, but transition into the lesson. Kids can't come in, sit down like robots and turn on their thinking brain. As mindful educators, we help ourselves by practicing staying calm, staying in the moment, while also guiding students into that mindful instruction, which involves that transition from where they came from, where they're are, what they're feeling into now. Setting the tone, staying present through what's happening around them.
So Michelle, consider a preschool classroom. What might mindfulness look like in a preschool classroom?
Oh, I wish I could go back to school and elementary school and some of my favorite teachers. Because that's what I think about when you practice mindfulness instruction. And you're, you're very mindful of how you are instructing. In the context of elementary school, for instance, helping them pay attention. Okay, Chris is sitting next to you. What is Chris wearing? She's wearing a blue sweater. What is Martha's hair look like today? Oh, she has it really nicely in a shortcut. She has boots on, they're tied. Oh, there's Joe over there. What is Joe doing? Joe is interacting with somebody, paying attention to each other, paying attention like investigators. You know, you could do really creative things to use the curiosity and the exploration piece when you, when you mindful teach. For instance, to get to know your students more and help them understand the relevance of what you're teaching. Say, okay, we're going to take a, a walk through your neighborhood, take out a graphic organizer and tell me, do you have trees in your neighborhoods? Do you have more buildings? What do those buildings look like? Let's categorize them. So there's so much to do in all the different discipline areas to make learning fun, present, current and relatable to students and, and meaningful. So making those connections between their life and where they are now to the learning piece.
I'm thinking too that, you know, the five senses come to play here too, right? Because you can observe by just looking, but you might be able to listen, right? Might smell as well and you might even sense. You know, have you ever felt the sense of danger or the sense of safety? So we can help kids with science by being more mindful, but also with their sense of who they trust and their sense of self and their own emotions. And Martha, I'm thinking about a student who might be anxious or depressed. And as a mindful teacher, what might you pick up on?
So I think that first of all, it's important to understand that kids who are feeling anxious or depressed, first of all, they may go in and out of feeling anxiety or depression. And it may or may not look like the way that adults express depression or anxiety. So it might be very obvious that a kid is having a hard time. They're having a hard time sitting still. It may look like they're having a hard time paying attention or having impulse control or concentrating. That might be a sign of depression or anxiety. They may be sitting with their head down. They may be not eating lunch or feeling, you know, their body language may be very depressed. They may be super hyper, but it's, it's about noticing changes in kids. Because of course, as their teacher, you're one of the people who knows them the best and spends the most time with them. But if you think a kid is anxious or depressed, understanding in a mindful way that you don't have to fix it immediately. You, what you need to do is take a deep breath, don't panic. Take a deep breath, listen, ask questions, reach out in a loving compassionate manner and ask for help or assistance from other people in your school community that are there to help you navigate kids who might be experiencing issues. But it's also important to understand that some kids won't have any signs of being anxious or depressed. And it may come out in some of the work or the writing that they're doing. And part of mindfulness is paying attention to those sorts of cues.
And I think that's, that's the key right there is it's not just those that are experiencing difficulty. Mindfulness instruction, being mindful while you instruct is, is really beneficial to all children. And that means the high achievers, those that are not presenting any, you know, problems before us. Everybody, because they have a lot of their own anxieties and things. Everybody benefits in the classroom when mindfulness is seamlessly weaved through the classroom and the instructions, how we interact, how we behave.
Absolutely. Because of course, we don't always know who's struggling with anxiety or depression. I mean, kids are experiencing so much pressure from so many different angles. And we all know as teachers or parents that some of the people that we need to be most concerned about are the people who are not on anyone's radar as acting anxious or depressed. It's the quiet girls or the well behaved, helpful boys. It's not always the kids who are throwing things or crying. It may be. But if you create an environment that's mindful, you catch those kids. If they're having a day where they're depressed, but feeling better the next day. It's sort of is a catch all gentle cradle almost to catch all of those kids in a compassionate way in the classroom.
So Michelle, you've spoken before about mindfulness and compassion, like being what, two wings of an eagle? Can you explain the relationship between the two?
Well, yes. I mean, you know, you can't, they say that you can, you really can't have one without the other. And that is true in the sense if you want to do it with, with fidelity. And by that we mean, okay, first of all, being mindful takes you being fully present, as you said, in the moment. So that alone puts you in a higher consciousness to really be in tune with just not your mind. Because as teachers, we're always thinking about, you know, the brain and learning and, and things. But thinking with your heart is what mindfulness does. Because it opens your heart to what is before you, around you and within you. And so when you take the compassion piece, as we had spoke about before, teachers are caring by nature, but caring and being compassionate are two different levels. Compassion is the higher level of caring where you open your heart through mindfully understanding what's going on with your students, a lens into how they're feeling, what they're experiencing, so that you can act in a compassionate way. Whether it's the tone of the voice, bringing somebody else in for extra help, a hug, just setting the momentum that is manageable and not overstressed loaded. These are all the things that come natural to us, but, but we lose its identity with all the things that have to be done in the course of a school day. We need to go back to simplicity, which is right here and right now in this moment of time, we have an opportunity to really build on creating a compassionate, loving and caring learning environment where all kids feel safe, nurtured and, you know, feel comfortable with risk taking to show their potential.
And I think in addition to the benefits of those kinds of things for students, and there are so many, it's also important to think about mindfulness is not something that we are doing to students or, you know, these five things we have to get done in order to be mindful. Mindfulness is also something as teachers, administrators, school personnel, parents, people, something that will feed us. I mean, there are so many teachers and people in schools who are suffering from terrible burnout, vicarious traumatization. You know, being a teacher and engaged with kids in this way is so difficult and challenging. And it's also very rich, but being mindful in our own educational practices is one way that we can take care of ourselves to be better educators for our kids. It's, it's an opportunity to model some of those mindful behaviors, but it's also a way to nurture our own selves and protect our own health.
And that's crucial because as parents, we know we're, we're only good as parents if we're healthy in there for our kids. And here you take in the context of school, you have these teachers that have their own life, their own trauma. And then they go to school and they suffer from vicarious trauma because they have all of these little bodies and minds and big bodies and minds that depend on them each and every day. And there is no other job that requires moment by moment response to crises and to lives as, as happens in schools. And so knowing that this is what it's about is taking care of ourselves first so that we can help take care of other people called our students. And I see this, teachers are breaking down everywhere. We're giving them the opportunity to self reflex, pay attention to their own health and say, yes, I'm important. When you practice side by side, when you exchange with your peers and your colleagues and your students and your school leaders in a caring, in authentic and genuine compassionate way, everybody is elevated naturally.
You know what I was thinking as you were talking, that if I were being mindful as a teacher, I might be able to go into a classroom and even if there's something disruptive that happens, I might be mindful of all the positive things happening, all the joy that's going on. So I'm going to be more centered and focused on the whole. And I can absorb more fully the things that are so positive, some of the joys of teaching. So I think that's a really critical, critical component of being mindful as a teacher is that you can take in the joy, you can more fully appreciate it. But I also realize that this whole thing of compassion and mindfulness do go hand in glove. If I'm going around being mindful, you know, I can be thrown off my game at times, you know, it does happen.
Everybody can.
Life is not perfect, you know, the stuff is still going to keep coming. And how we respond though may be different because we pause, we observe and then we say, ah, what's a mindful way to respond? What is a compassionate way to respond? If I have a disruptive student in the corner and I am mindful, I might say, here, here's the problem. If I'm compassionate, I'm going to go a step deeper and I'm going to think of what a compassionate response would be. And it might be a private discussion with children. It might be going over and just talking quietly with the individual. It might be a teachable moment. And I'm thinking, you know, we've all experienced what we might call compassion challenges. Martha, have you ever had one of those?
Every day as a parent, as a teacher, as a researcher, as just a person. I think that to, in order to be mindful, thoughtful people, we have to acknowledge that there are these profound compassion challenges where you just think, I'm at the end, I cannot deal with this student or child or again, or any of the thoughts that go through your mind. And first of all, I think it's important when you're in that moment to take a deep breath, right? We all know the breathing or my mother used to count to 10, right? To just get a little bit of distance. And to understand that a lot of the work that we do to prepare to be compassionate happens before we get into the classroom and after. It's sort of an iceberg effect, right? The top of the iceberg is where we are actually in front of students in a classroom. The rest of it is below the water and all of the work that we do to prepare. And part of that is understanding when you're met with these compassion challenges, taking a moment to examine your own perspective. What is it about this that is so challenging for me? And it may be something as easy as, I am too hungry. I'm exhausted. I didn't sleep. I was upgrading papers. You know, or any of those kinds of stresses. Or it may be this reminds me of something that happened a long time ago. Or, you know, all of that work is something that we have to be doing iteratively throughout time. And then when we are challenged in these moments, doing our best to extend compassion to the child, obviously, and to respond in a thoughtful, mindful, compassionate way, even if we're not feeling that way, it still counts. And having compassion for ourselves that yes, there are these challenges. There are times you just, it's too hard. It's really, really difficult. So knowing again, when to ask for help, when to talk to a colleague and say, oh, I'm having such a hard time. This kid is really a challenge for me in this particular way. Getting additional outside help, working in your own therapy if you need to, journaling, those sorts of things, I think, help prepare us for these sorts of compassionate challenges. And, and understanding after the fact, if you mess up, if you don't meet the student where they are in a mindful compassionate way, that it's okay to go back and, and apologize. And to say, you know, I didn't respond to you the way that I wanted to. I want to let you know that I'm sorry for that. And reapproach it again, because mindfulness is all about doing something and then stepping back and doing it again and coming back and coming back.
You know, as, as I'm listening to you, I'm thinking of, you know, children who have behavioral or mental health challenges. And so often we think it's the child, the child who needs to be fixed, diagnosed, screened, and then we get therapy, right? Well, it's not quite that simple, really. There's this whole interplay between the environment, the context and the child. And we bring ourselves into the equation as teachers, as personnel in the school. We may have had a horrible week and here we are, it's Friday. And, and we need to pull through. And our goal is really compassionate action, you know, in school, in an environment with kids. And hopefully there will be learning going on, but it'll be in the context, not only of understanding what's happening, which is step one, the consciousness, but in terms of action that are compassionate actions. And if you've kind of misdiagnosed in a loose way, you've misread the situation. You know, you missed out on kids who were disappointed for, for one reason or another. And you're proceeding as if it's business as usual. You know, there could be something that happens that ends up being a bigger disappointment for you than as a teacher. If you're in this compassionate space and you're thinking about a community, Michelle, I'm thinking about the five Cs in the book, right?
Right.
And, and you know that you're building a community where you care for each other. And it's a community that will respond to the situation. It's not all on you as the teacher. It's not all on the student who has the issue. It's on everyone together, working together, pulling for each other. Then I think it's easier to address these compassion challenges. Before we go on, I'm wondering if anyone out there listening may have compassion challenges or what we might otherwise call teachable moments that you'd like to share.
Yeah, I, when I was a teacher, I think the biggest compassion challenge that I saw was when students felt like things were not fair and things were not equitable. And that was such a great teaching moment because it got me as a teacher to be able to talk about inequities in general and how that makes you feel and how compassion is kind of the best practice in all things. And that led to some really fruitful discussions. And those second graders would say things that sounded so wise and really taught me from time to time as well.
Great example. Rosemary, did you have something to add?
I tell you what.
Well, Rosemary's thinking, I, I do.
Okay.
Let me put my video on so you can see how dark it is in Alaska in the afternoon.
That might be a challenge, so.
Sometimes I would have compassion fatigue with some coworkers that would lose it with children.
Very real.
And we're yellers and screamers and trying to find an alternative. Because I was some often put in that mentoring role, how to champion the better angels. Because you knew that these teachers sometimes and administrators who would get stressed and yell, it wasn't because they dislike the student. It was because of their own internal need to control. And when we become more open minded about when we need to control and why we need to control, then I think we can use the mindfulness practice to realize that the breath work can help calm those internal desires.
Great point.
Absolutely. And as you're talking, I was thinking about, yeah, having some compassion fatigue with challenging colleagues and teachers who I felt were being too hard on students. And I was thinking that one of the things that was really helpful for me as a teacher was to talk out loud about my process, either with the students or with the teacher. So to name things as they were happening and to make very transparent my own thought. Like you're yelling at me and, and I'm finding it hard to understand what you're saying, but I want to let you know that when you're yelling, I'm not sure what to do next. And, and modeling for them.
Framing.
It's, it's hard for me to want to sit down and give you what you want if you're throwing things at me. Or, you know, is there a way that we can take a couple of breaths and, you know, and come back and talk about this? Because I think for, in any classroom environment or really any environment, like making those processes transparent is a, a great way to teach people what you're doing. And especially for kids who, you know, adult minds are sort of mysterious. How did these things happen and how are you patient? Like, you know, making all of those things visible and articulated, I think, is a helpful technique.
I love that, Martha. Yeah.
It's like modeling within modeling. It's, it's really a great way to let them understand the steps and, and what is happening at the time.
Yeah, even saying like, I'm, I'm really tired today. It's hard to be here. Is anybody else tired?
Right. So you channel your own feelings. And, and so, and that kind of sharing is so important because that sharing also is the connector piece. Sometimes when you say that there's that generational difference between the adults, you know, as aliens and students, right? Is to understand that what makes you real to them is what you experience, you know, in the same sense. And so when you are able to translate, you're hurting or you're not feeling up to par today, that's something they can automatically relate to. And, you know, when we're thinking about this and the mindfulness, the, the, I think of like an elastic band or a rubber band, right? What mindfulness practice all these years has done for me is it has helped me to really stretch my ability for A, longer periods of time and B, to really retrain my brain in the direction I want it to go. Rather than to be, you know, snap happy and just react. I am able to say, I'm here right now. I'm going to take a deep breath and notice, ooh, didn't like what he just said, you know, in my classroom. And just dissolve it with a deep breath, go back to, how do I want to respond as a compassionate person? That's my check. It's, it's, it's easy because as human beings, we lend ourselves to love first. We're not hateful human beings. We, we lend ourselves to love and caring. So this isn't willy nilly stuff again. It's really going back to our core of who we are and what makes us so special as educators. Because even what, you know, some hardcore educators that might seem so strict and, and stern in things, still have, I'm convinced, the best hearts there are out there. Because you couldn't do what they do day in and day out if they didn't have that compassionate heart. The problem is that we have stuffed that compassionate heart so deeply with all these other mandates and constraints that until we shift the mindset back to our core, what makes us tick, what's most important, then we're not going to make or see or feel the strides that we're capable of with mindfulness.
So with that note, let's just take a pause. We are going to do a meditation, which is another way to improve our mindfulness and prepare us for everything that we face as teachers, as people in school. So if you will, close your eyes. You can sit in a good posture, navel point to your spine, tuck your chin back slightly. Feet are flat on the floor. Breathe deeply. And as you continue to breathe, imagine a sky, a night sky full of stars. Imagine that you're sitting outside, gazing up at all the stars with a sense of awe and wonder. And as you continue to look, you see one star that's twinkling just a little brighter. And suddenly on that star appears a picture, an image of someone you love. Continue to breathe deeply. And reach up and pull that star into your heart and feel the love there. And we'll do this again. Gaze up at the stars. See another one that's twinkling just a little brighter. And go ahead and reach up and pull that star into your heart. And as you do, you'll see the image of someone you love bringing that to your heart. Then inhale and exhale and you can open your eyes. So as we've been talking throughout this series, Michelle, you know, we've talked about mindfulness and all the various forms it takes and how it can help with emotions, can help with the sense of feeling good about oneself and others. It can help increase our awareness of what's going on around us. And we know that there are a variety of ways to improve our mindfulness. We can do that by really consciously being aware, just saying to ourselves, you know what? When I go into this classroom tomorrow, I'm going to try to pay attention to every student, right? I may try to do a mindful greeting with each student as they come into the classroom, looking over at the person, smiling, giving a greeting, acknowledging something, right? Like your shoes? Hope you had a good evening? Good to see you? So those sorts of mindfulness activities really increase our sense of wellbeing as well as the sense the students have. We can also use instruction to help us. And we can think about literature or history or science or... Martha, do you have examples of how you might use literature, for example, to improve mindfulness?
Well, one thing, I taught sixth grade and then I taught high school as an English and creative writing teacher. And so it was an easy thing to have the kids sort of work some of these practices into what we were learning about in literature. And I did a couple of things. One of the things I would do is have them choose a character in a book that we're reading. You know, Othello or Cyrano de Bergerac or one of the boys in Lord of the Flies. And to write a separate piece about that character's experience in the world, answering particular guided questions. One of the best examples of that is when we were reading The Odyssey in ninth grade in a New Haven public school. And the kids couldn't relate to it at all. But what I had them do was write their own odyssey throughout their own lives of different kinds of moments using Odysseus' journey as sort of a template for what that might look like. And they could write their odyssey in words and with pictures and with photographs and all sorts of things to make connections between their experience and a character's experience. Because those experiences are so universal in so many ways.
So Michelle, when you think about mindfulness and instruction, what comes to mind?
Well, there's so many ways, no matter what the discipline area is. I mean, history, when I think of the five Cs in our book, when you talk about confidence and courage and relating to characters and heroes and historical figures. It's just a great way to get to know your students better because they can help reveal some things about themselves and how they related to that character. What is it that they see in that character that they aspire to be? What are the connectors? Those are all great ways as far as science goes. I mean, exploratory and curiosity. I mean, we need to really get better about engagement. And how to best do that is to really involve your students in the learning process and make sure that every lesson really involves the student piece of how to become engaged and how they can in some way relate to that lesson. So they are able to say, this is why it's important, this is why we're doing it, and this is why it's valuable to me.
Yeah, I was thinking, as you're talking, Michelle, about when I was in training to become a teacher and all of the reading that I did from John Dewey and Palafreri. John Dewey's like taking whatever is in a child's pocket, right? And starting from where the child is. But now as a scientist, there are so many ways to connect science to mindfulness. Because what is being a scientist, it's being an observer and being quiet and watching and taking notes and noting every single thing and looking to see how things are related. And I think kids are naturally, we are as biological beings, we are naturally mindful scientist observers of the world. And so bringing mindfulness practice into the curricula is just tapping into what is already in the children's pockets.
It's just opening up the pockets, as you say. Because when you were talking about that piece, it is so true. Teaching teachers about how to deal with those compassionate challenges. I used to say, when you become an observer, and it's the same premise you were just talking about, we're naturally good at observing and really paying attention. When you take yourself out of the equation and become an observer, you have that quiet self that can use all of your senses uninterrupted to really engage in what's before you. And that's a crucial piece, becoming an observer.
I'm looking at the time and thinking that we have another chapter on executive functioning. So I want to thank both of you because I think we've given some really vivid examples today of how mindfulness can be used in classrooms where it doesn't take a lot of extra time or energy. You can actually end up saving time because you're more in tune with the students, they're more in tune with you. So then the chapter on executive functioning. We might start by just saying like, what is that? You know, Michelle, do you want to talk about the brain and relationship to executive functioning?
Well, this is what I'll say about knowing about executive functioning. Unfortunately, there are so many children that are coming to school each day with challenged executive functioning at this point. And when you think of the context of a classroom, right? And general instruction and needing to know how to follow directions. And how are our directions given a lot of times in rapid succession? Open up your books, put this on the table, do this next. And there's a child going, huh? What? You know, same, and the working memory piece of it. So until we develop the part of the brain which is needed for learning, the executive functioning part for flexibility, that we are just really treading water in trying to get them to make these quantum leaps in excelling in education. So understanding the brain, understanding how executive functioning plays out in the classroom and mindfulness is particularly, again, that solution piece of calming the brain down and going in that nice slow dance through transitioning them through the learning process to help grow and develop effective executive functioning.
When we think about executive functioning, we're thinking about learning, really. The cognition that goes on in the brain and all the parts that are needed for memory, for attention, for retrieval, for paying attention for a long period of time without being distracted, for self-regulation. All those activities are what the scientists would call executive functioning. And there's research that really is showing that you can get increases in academic learning by focusing on improving each of these executive functions. And it makes sense, doesn't it? If you have a student who has a better memory, you know, then they're going to do better on math. They will, if they can have a good memory for basic math facts, then when you get to higher order mathematics, you don't have to go back and count on your fingers, you know? You think about attention. If a child is not attending for more than a couple of minutes at a time, it's going to be really hard to sit through a 20-minute lesson. So you think about self-regulation. You know, a student has trouble paying attention because they're distracted by what's happening outside. They're looking out the window instead of just calmly observing and getting back focused on the lesson. It's like, no, they're over there. They have to be out the window looking to see what's going on. And it's like the students have difficulty focusing. And so the question is, you know, we can work on these things, I suppose, by just pushing more mathematics at children, right?
It doesn't work.
More drill.
Does not work.
Or maybe there's a shortcut.
Yeah.
And that might have to do with what we do as teachers, as mindful teachers. Martha, do you have any thoughts about this?
About executive functioning particularly? I mean, I think that from a neuroscience perspective, and executive functioning, which happens often in our frontal lobe. It's, if you think of it literally as the executive that is functioning, saying, do this, don't do that, you know, be here, be there. That is one of the last parts of our brain to develop fully. So understanding that kids are in different stages of that development, regardless of where you are on the age continuum. It varies by gender, it varies by the degree, the number of traumatic experiences that a kid might have. And again, I don't want to keep harping on the same thing about making that process transparent, but talking with kids about, you know, this is something that we all have to learn. And it can be really hard to learn how to sit still or pay attention. This is why I'm going to ask you to do this, but let's think together about ways to make that easier. Do you need to get up and stretch after 20 minutes? Do I need to sit you away from the window? As teachers, I know all of you have those kinds of tricks to help kids learn how to sort of scaffold this executive functioning piece. And letting kids know, there are a lot of kids who are struggling with that. That doesn't mean there's something wrong with them. It doesn't mean that they're stupid, which are often the messages that kids get, right? You can't sit still, so, you know, you're not very smart. And that is a real disservice to those kids because they're learning, right? And, you know, a compassionate approach is, these are really hard things. I mean, I know as a parent, the things that my kids had to sit through, sitting in a classroom for eight hours a day and not moving and not talking, I don't know a single adult who could do it with much grace.
I can't do it for five minutes for crying out loud.
These are really tough things and saying to kids, boy, this is tough.
You know, you think about it. There's so many things we can do. We can scaffold learning, right? Instead of expecting that everyone's going to be sitting through for 20 minutes and doing 150 problems, you can start with a smaller group, you could start with a subset rather than learning all your math facts, right? You start with a part of them. So all that is helpful. We can add prompts, we can add mnemonic devices to help with memory. All of those things, if they're used appropriately in classrooms, can help kids gain confidence. And what do we know? That as kids gain confidence, then learning becomes easier because they've got this foundation. And they approach their learning with a mindset that says, I can, I can do this, I am capable, I am learning. Rather than the one that says, you know, I'm not so good.
And that's why I think it's so important to give kids the opportunity to be successful if they're struggling with executive functioning in some way. Find a small way that they can succeed so they can begin to conceptualize themselves, visualize themselves as a kid with impulse control or who can sit still. And it could be a small thing to start with. That's also a mindfulness practice, right?
Well, because mindfulness does improve executive functioning, which is so key. And when we're talking about attention, you know, there are two different types of attention. Attention doesn't have to be absolute still, it has to have the ability to be able to focus. And that's what I like about mindfulness and yoga because classrooms should have movement. They should allow students to be able to take that excess energy and filter it in a positive way and know that that's okay. We should be mixing it up, we should be weaving it through. And with the mindfulness stretching, the ability for the brain to focus at longer periods of time is crucial to learning. I mean, the last time I learned anything, I know it wasn't with my eyes closed or singing a song. It was from being, you know, focused and present.
However, singing songs can be used.
Yes, you're right. You can. Yeah, yeah, that is a good way. You're right. And it's a creative way, right?
That really makes me think also, based on, you know, thinking about what you just said, how important it is to build in and to take breaks away from whatever the curriculum that you're learning to have moments of fun and play. You know, that that's also a mindfulness. That can feel sometimes like, oh, I'm distracted because I got to get back to these math facts or this chapter. But having, giving kids the opportunity to play and to be a little bit silly. And to be, kids is something that we all need and is a good, I always find it a good remedy for the compassion fatigue, the ants in their pants, we used to say in my house or...
It's highly more, teachers that have fun are highly more relatable too. Because what kind of classroom do you want to be in? I want to be in a fun classroom every single time, all day long, personally. But I'm saying, I know. But somewhere along the line, we thought learning needed to not be fun. And that's just simply not true. And what we're learning through this whole process of awakening the senses and everything and paying attention to our interactions is that people want to connect. They want to have fun, they want relatability.
And even if we're doing that, like with the five senses, and people start giggling, saying, this seems like it's a little bit silly or, oh, that was a really funny noise or something like that.
Right.
It's really valuable.
Some of Chris's breathing exercises.
It's still a mindful practice, right? You're noticing what's happening and you're, it doesn't have to be serious.
Can we just focus for a minute on metacognition? Another one of the executive functionings that I think can help students. So if students are having trouble learning, if they can learn about how they learn, right? Like, I learn best when I'm having fun and I like to be actively engaged, then they can maybe help structure their own learning. If after they've had a lesson, they do a self-assessment. Gee, how well did that go for me? Could I have done something better? Then they learn more about self-regulation. So I think we've got lots of tools to teach students. And as we're ending this session today, I want to focus on a couple of things from our chapter. One is on page 134. There's a table that compares executive function to 21st century learning. You know, with STEM and STEAM and all that's going on and all the interest in science. There's also an interest today on what do students need to learn now so that they can be the best workers in our workforce tomorrow? And they have to do with things like good communication skills, flexibility, being able to adapt. You may not know what your job is going to be. Your job will be changing more rapidly. So being able to adapt is really important. Teamwork is really important. Well, if we look at all those attributes, we can come up with executive functions that relate to these things. Being able to plan and organize is really important. To communicate, to be good at making decisions. You know, sometimes kids have difficulty with judgment. Like, did I make a good decision? Was that be a good thing to do or not? But with practice and feedback, role plays perhaps even, we can help students gain these skills in a classroom that might end up being very useful for their work tomorrow. So do you have any thoughts about this 21st century learning?
Well, that was my whole dissertation for my talk at work. But no, about what kids do need to know in order to be successful at school, at work, at home, in relationships for the future. And Chris really pointed out really crucial parts of this chapter. And executive functioning actually is a predictor of success. And so we really need to stay on top of this. And like Martha also added the great point of understanding that it's not fully developed until much later in life. So when, it's not thinking that kids need to be at a certain place at a certain time.
We can't expect kids to be fully formed adults.
No, because there's adults that aren't fully formed adults. But the point to that, right, is that we need to meet kids where they are and help them build the confidence of these skills so that they become more confident and competent learners in the classroom. And it can be done with special care.
And again, I'm so pleased with this line of thinking compared to one that would say, this child is making mistakes, this child is at fault. This child is disrupted, this child can't learn. It's just such a negative way of proceeding versus thinking, oh, there's something going on in the brain here. You know, there may have been problems with attachment as a young child that might be impacting how a child is processing things today, right? There may be trauma going on at home. And so we want to try to do what we can to deal with those things, but also to build these skills. And so wondering if, at this point, if there are any questions from the audience?
We're having too good of a time. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions?
As we're waiting, what I'm going to do is I'm going to share something with you I just got this past week. Remember the conference we were at a few weeks ago in St. Louis, Michelle? Jane Keessy was one of the authors there. She has a new book out on holistic leadership, thriving schools, okay? And she talks about leadership priorities. I think there's a relationship to executive functioning, and I was just pleased when I found these. One is perseverance. I want to model and encourage others in sustaining momentum and having the fortitude while making tangible progress. Perseverance, certainly, if your brain is functioning with all eight cylinders, right, and you're plowing ahead, it's easier to stay at it. Dependability, we can count on you. You know, you're not going to be wandering off here, you'll be where I need you, you'll be responding, you're told me you'll be here at 2:00 and you're there. That's an important one.
Did they have questions?
I'm going to give you two more and then we'll figure out. Efficiency and adaptability. So again, there's different ways of looking at 21st century skills of leadership and executive functioning. And Jill, do you have a question? Or Dana, is there a question that came through the chat line?
No, we don't have any questions on the chat line.
Okay, because names were popping up, so we were thinking that there were questions. So sorry, Chris, that I interrupted.
That's okay. So anyway, as we're wrapping up today, I want to think about this whole arena that we're dealing with and what the implications are for the future. Because, you know, we've got the situation in schools today with just kind of a void of leadership. We're really not sure in many cases what to do, where to go, what's next. There aren't a lot of mandates coming down from districts right now or from states or from the federal government about doing things differently. We know that social emotional learning is becoming more popular, mindfulness is gaining in schools, but where do you think we're headed? Just any ideas?
Well, if I had it my way, we would really start focusing in a more mindful way because there's not enough visionaries out there to really, you know, move the needle of change to the degree that's needed. There are so many more children and more adults that need help within the school system before any learning can happen. And until we directly deal with the root of the problem, which is what these children are experiencing, then we can't make the gains we want. So I'm hopeful that school leaders will look at their own life and think, what is it in my life that could also improve my professional life, which is health and well-being? We all have the ability to increase health and well-being in the context of school through compassion, mindfulness, and doing better for each other and ourselves.
Martha?
Boy, it's hard to add to that. I guess I would say that I think more and more teachers and people in schools already know this, but we're moving away from schools as just being a place to teach a subject matter or content and understanding that often schools have to step into voids that families, communities can't meet. And I do see a movement towards sometimes pathologizing kids or diagnosing kids with particular types of mental illnesses or conditions. And I understand why that's happening, but I think it's...
It's concerning.
It's concerning and it distracts us from the real issues that children and schools are facing, which is not necessarily untreated mental illness or a lack of diagnoses. It's the experiences that kids are bringing with them into schools and how complex real lives are and that learning is not just about math, you know, reading and arithmetic, but is so much more than that.
I would just add to that, that we have a moral imperative. If you look at the world today, and we know that so many adults feel a sense of alienation and isolation, we see the violence around us. I think we have a real opportunity with compassion in schools, year after year, in a very consistent way, to help change what's happening. I think this could be a time of transformation. And I believe that as we are more mindful, we wake more into our power and the power of our being and the power of our community.
And I think just to jump on that, that if you think about an issue like school shootings and school violence, one of the sources we can go to for inspiration and information are the kids themselves and their families. If you see all the amazing work that some of those kids are doing about making reforms in their schools and giving those of us, the adults, information about what they need and what that should look like, I'm very inspired and encouraged by the connections that kids make to each other, the richness of families and their involvement in schools and how much kids can teach us about being better teachers and educators.